I think I like the round and actually mount it in down inside because you can put anchor bolts. But man, I know how it's easier sometime, but it shouldn't be too hard to get through. Couple inches of pavement.
Didn't say that was too hard.
Yeah, I put my on one.
The one in the chat room.
Oh, I thought, how do I get your opinion? That'd be it.
That's a plate. No worries. Yeah, we'll keep believing. It is like.
I'm sorry, I.
I guess.
Oh, they will make me. All right, everybody will stand, we'll do the pledge. Page of allegiance.
Pledge and to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We will have invitation. Most gracious heaven, Father, to give you thanks for another day, another opportunity to come together and try to make our little town better. Lord, I pray for your leadership, your guidance. Help us through these meetings and lead each and every one as they leave here tonight. Watch over them and bring us all back together in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Roco.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Tally.
Here.
Mr. Cook won't be here tonight because she's got to be there. They've been waiting for the last two weeks, I think.
Yes, but I don't know about that.
Been walking the streets and everything they can, so hopefully, hopefully they'll have a baby. Okay. Copy of the minutes, I guess.
Yeah.
Very damn early, I think, if they're all doing shit.
Make a motion to approve minutes from May 1st and a special call meeting on May 12th.
Someone's right in my face.
I signed both of those, right? Is that what they were?
This was the bank statement.
So I need to sign this.
You need to sign.
Need to. You need to second it.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Tally.
Yes.
Get any reports from the board, get any, some of the reports from Jane.
Make sure I have one more.
May 1st, this one's just the call.
All the other ones. Okay, that's the original. That's the special.
Yeah, this is the special.
Here's the name, okay. It's hanging in your bag.
We get caught up in a minute.
You have anything to go with that?
Nothing really to report. I mean, I had everything closed out. Look, we talked about last, last night with the.
Okay, we'll get our money back yet.
Still, state still working on it, yeah. Going that, really haven't got anything.
I, I need to write down. Because it was just sort of a little crazy month. Earlier in the month, I think, maybe in the last month, anyway, I got a letter from T-Deck. We'd been getting them, I guess, but we didn't know what they were and I hadn't opened it up, but it was pertaining to the hospital. So all the radiology or X-ray machines, all the, any radiology equipment goes through T-Deck and they had us on quite a bit for seven years.
You didn't have to pay them?
Yeah. But anyway, long story short, they told me what to do and I filled out the forms and basically Dwayne cut the cords off what we could and we got all that stuff shut in and tricked away and they left, didn't charge us anything and cleared everything up. That's, that's crazy, seven years later.
Yeah.
Wow.
But I never, I never, well, I'm sure you've seen it, T-Deck, and you think, oh, that's something about a hospital.
Yeah.
But before we'd bought it a year, they thought they might charge us this year, but they was going to waive the six-year warranty at the county. And then after everything done, they said, no, they don't worry about it and cleared us out, so we got that took care of. So right now, as it's, all that stuff, it's dead. Didn't use it, which I don't think.
Wouldn't have anyway.
Be using anyway, but it does. It's just weird. Every one thing, cut us off, got that took care of. And they, I can't say anything about anybody in the state. They've been great anytime we've called and work on, on that hospital stuff. Anything, what is? Had a meeting last week, I guess, with a, what we call rectori, rectorian, healthcare, I guess. They bought Bradley Memorial Hospital and actually owned, used to be Hamilton Medical. I think they pulled all their stuff together, but it was for the Bradley County, Polk County Healthcare Need Assessment. Polk County, several from Polk County showed up and we all met and discussed what we needed in the county, which is not hard.
No.
It don't take a lot. But anyway, we got that and then, of course, they met with Bradley County and they'll have, we have another meeting, I think, the 24th to see where that come from. They knew that the hospital had closed, you know, but we didn't get in any detail or discussion or anything about that, you know, we just, that might be an opportunity somewhere, you know, but, but in the meantime, so. Oh my gosh, I don't know, there's, I know there's other stuff, I can't remember. Hopefully, I get everything from minors home coming lined up now, it's just getting it layers out and get it going. Hopefully, maybe Keith can get that down for me tomorrow. I don't know. Something else did come to mind here in a little bit, I'm sure. But with that being said. Courtney, did she do it? Got to talk so much, do so much at the mother, can't remember. Yeah, so, but anyway. And she said she could call in if we needed to or whatever, but I hope we, we'll be able to find and move on. But we're going to jump on old business. And the first thing is ordinance 127, it's an ordinance to amend Title III of the Duck Town Municipal Code regarding municipal courts. And as most people know, we've been trying to work on our courts, so we've actually, this will be, this will get our courts set up so we can start enforcing our code and ordinances. This is something we hadn't, we've had them for years, but really never been able to enforce them without city court or something. General Sessions has been gracious enough to, to work with us and sheriff to do this and we've got a new contract with the sheriff, so hopefully, this will be our second reading, so we can get this done and hopefully by first and nth month, we can start getting letters and start, start the process and hopefully that'll help and we don't have to go to court. But in the meantime, this should get us going, I hope.
Now, page three in the middle there, it says court cost.
Okay.
Because what did Justice decide to put there?
Well, the court cost would be, that should be through the county.
Okay.
You know, I mean, that's the lesson now, yeah.
So they're the ones that will.
They set court costs.
Yeah. And then the fines and, fines, of course, will be up to us and what did we, we talked about like $25 and that didn't sound like much, but when you do it every day, it adds up. So that's, that is what we talked about.
I think we put it in already.
I'd not be.
I don't know, I remember discussing it, let's get it on.
It's under the 128, I believe.
You know, I just. Prophecy the code. Got to remember the name now. Eske, is it John?
John Eske.
And see, because all this is the city judge, the city judge, it makes it the city judge and since we're not doing that.
No, I think the.
At any of that.
I think the fine part is under 28, the other one.
Yeah, look at the last page, 128, see if that's what they're.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's what we'd set up.
Hold that here.
13, 4.
No, I've got the wrong.
Yeah, it's 128.
We got the wrong one.
This is, this is just court.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is what we're working on, 127 right now, four of the courts to get it set up.
Yeah, and I just had a question about that, but you said that's what Melissa feel in, so we're getting on that one.
Because honestly, this is probably the first, again, we're the first in the state to do it, so it's a, we're figuring.
Learning.
Trying to learn it, figure it out and we will. And I've heard some others start to talk about that, so it might be something for small cities, man, it just.
Can't pay it.
It'd be easier.
Yeah, that's true.
And less headache for, for us, then I don't think it's going to be that much of a judge as well. So, did I hear a motion to pass ordinance 127?
Yeah, make a motion, approve 127.
I'll second. Roco.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Tally.
Yes.
What's the date of this?
Yes.
A lot of reading here, so we're not going to go down that far. Unless you got to be, you want to be here to meditate. But it's all available if anybody wants to see it. But this is an ordinance to amend Title 13 of the Duck Town Municipal Code regarding municipal courts. Basically, I guess this one is setting the fines and stuff, right?
Well, it's just a, we're, you take away the old Title 13 and replacing it with this.
Title 13 basically is property maintenance regulations, so that's. Let me see, that was on page what?
The very last page, 13, 405, types of violations in family.
Yeah, property property maintenance, slums, clearance, vehicles, junkyards.
So basically, let's read this right. Any person violating this chapter is subject to the civil penalty of $50 plus court cost for each separate violation of this chapter. The municipal court may issue orders to remove vehicles from private property. Each day the violation of this chapter continues shall be considered a separate violation. So I guess that's how.
That's how it comes, $50 a day, yeah.
$1,500, they won't move a $200 car, they'd be wishing ahead, wouldn't they? Wow. All that, I hear a motion to accept ordinance 128?
Yeah, I make a motion, ordinance 128, approve it.
I'll second. Roco.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Tally.
Yes.
Before the getting new beds must work next to accept that bed in the fireplace.
Got to put this on, we're adding pickleball court nets. We've got everything, I think, pretty well done in good shape except for nets, so. Think we'd had three beds, I don't remember if you don't have all three of them here, do you?
That was the lowest.
But this was the lowest one there. And there was somewhat difference in them, but anyway. It's for $3,079.78, that's for four nets. And they said something about maybe, something about shipping, I don't remember what she said about that, but in the meantime.
Well, this is the same company that provides for majority of the county recreational stuff.
Yeah, house, school, youth, yeah. We looked around at different ones. These will be ground in ground, so they'll, they shouldn't be able to get pulled up. We hold.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid by BSN Sports.
I'll second.
Thirty-one hundred dollars.
Roco.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Tally.
Yes.
New business will be our first reading of our 25, 26 budget. We had workshop a couple of weeks ago, I can't remember what day it was. Just sort of went over everything. Have you seen anything that we need to change since then?
Well, I made a little typo on the State Street thing.
Okay.
So I'll have to, I've got it fixed on my.
We talked about putting $75,000 in for the streets to do some paving that we need to do.
I left a zero.
And 70, yeah, 7,500.
So I've got.
We've addressed it already, you're going to correct it.
Yeah, probably can't do a lot for 7,500.
No.
Can't do a lot for 7,500.
No.
But it's, it's a storm.
Between that and what hopefully the state will be able to do on the intersections.
If everything looks good there, we can, we'll probably have another workshop. When will we have our other meeting for the final reading?
Well.
June 27th or in the west?
No, June 17th is, we got, that's when the public comes and have their, for their input and we can have a second vote there. And then before July 1st, we got to have the final reading, unless you want to do number first, but our meeting's on the 3rd, because there, it's kind of a.
You know, you might want to maybe do the 26th, I said Thursday night, because then minors home coming to 27th and 28th.
And then that way, well, let's do it the 26th and then we can iron out any other details if we need to for the minors home coming.
Thursday, final reading.
Yeah.
We can get sidetracked, but anyway, the earlier the better, yes. 5:30?
Yeah.
That'd be basically a special call meeting just for the final reading, perhaps. They shouldn't take it long.
No, okay. Works.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 129, which is, uh, uh, July, the 25, 26 budget.
I'll second.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Tally.
Yes.
I don't know if it happened on those banks, I can't remember, we had a meeting on the water grant, water budget grant and sort of first thing, everybody to get together on that, see, getting started and all that, so hopefully, they get that, what is the environmental phase, I think, got it complete, so.
Leaving.
Yeah. Which is weird, it's sort of slow and then when it happens, it's like, oh, yeah, I can't remember, I need to, I try to write stuff down. But anyway, didn't mean to get off track on that, but none of that, done that. The next thing we've got is a contract for law enforcement services between the city Duck Town and Polk County Sheriff's Department. This is something we've been doing since 1987, so the cheaper to do this than it is to have a, our own police department. And they've been pretty good, I think this year we've actually grown up. It's been $24,000 a year, I think we're moving it to 30 this year. And actually, with our new code enforcement stuff, we'll have MIP doing our codes enforcement, but in order for it to be seen in General Sessions Court, it's got to have a citation with the sheriff's department, so they've agreed in this year to take care of that. I'm trying to think how we wrote that written citation to municipal code and ordinances. At first, I think we changed what they say, they would.
Enforce.
Enforce.
Yeah, well, so he, the sheriff was fine with that. Of course, then we put in there that any offense will be handled and heard in General Sessions Court, so. And judge both the final bets, so that we just need one reading of this, passing, okay. I hear a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to.
Contract with sheriff department.
Approve the contract through 2025, 2026, with sheriff.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Tally.
Yes.
We need to do three copies, so if you got another one that I can sign on that way, can get him to hand me. Maybe this one if you want.
And then after you've signed both of them, at the end of the meeting, I'll go put the CDC on line like we always do.
Then we're done.
Send it to him to see.
I know there's something on those. Ordinance that we're just going for the court staff tomorrow, did they need to be initial?
Yes, I'm glad you said that.
Well, that's what I just.
Because I was looking at it and.
I thought, feel like I'm buying a house from them.
Yeah.
But I seen it there, I wasn't thinking it was, they were paid basically, had to be initial, yeah.
Yeah. You have to have them, yes.
It says ordinance number, is that, is that what it may be or something? For this one, I just noticed this one, I don't have it.
No.
28 didn't have anything, just here, if you looked, it just, it might be the ordinance number, you just need to write about it.
Yeah, we've never had initial.
That's what I was thinking, I just seen it there. Don't want to miss it. Weird, didn't, you got the one, not the others. But anyway, oh, here's another thing, I forgot. We did get our license renewed and all that good, I think, have we got them yet?
Yes.
So we got the license, but in the meantime, was having to do a change of ownership. So finally, record this letter here, hopefully everything, the county's name will be off everything, it'll just be solely the city of Duck Town, so it would, even from the state side, it's going to be ours. So they did get that taken care of.
Yes, I got a copy.
Okay. And I actually worked this one. But I'll admit. I'll fix save it. This thing here, June 17th, we definitely, on our announcement, we definitely, we hadn't had a planning commission meeting, so we definitely need to have one on that one.
No, well, I mean, that's separate.
Yeah.
That's VZA.
Yeah.
So I mean, that'll, that's going to happen anyway regardless.
Okay, so.
It's already scheduled and advertised.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Okay. Because she messaged me last night about it and I'm like, I'll try to make the cure, right?
No, it's totally separate.
We're good, yeah.
Separate and I think it's, it's your day, today or tomorrow, county paper comes out. But anyway, all these.
Should come out, yeah, it'll be in it.
Okay.
Because you have to advertise.
Yeah, everything is in it, I thought.
Yes, planning commissions and six, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but anyway, so Johnson, planning on being here.
Yeah.
So we got. So we're hearing and then planning commission, okay. June 17th, 6:30, the Republic Budget Meeting.
And then don't forget June 26th at 5:30 is the special call meeting.
Yeah. Usually the third Tuesday we do a housing meeting too, so that's been on the 17th, so that's what we got planned. We got all kinds, if we need one. We can skip it for.
It's always the.
Same.
That Tuesday.
Yeah, but we usually do it early, 5:30, don't we?
Yeah.
So June 16th to 26th, that's when we do the final reading, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just noticed on calendar here, June 19th, we don't, did we, do you guys get that? We hadn't added that to the list or how did that work?
We had.
We did?
We had.
We had.
We're reworking our stuff that.
Sometime.
In pass ever gets it.
So are we giving them that day off?
We had the page.
Okay. Ready to spend one too?
Yeah.
So you've just spent two. But we, we'd mentioned that the last year after this and I'd, I'd look back and it's not in the works yet, so.
It's not on the papers.
Yeah, it's not out, it's in the papers once we pass.
So normally.
Because that's when the planning commission would have been in step, but.
And that's what I was, what I was telling Rob, I said, and it's holiday with provision, that's right.
That's the reason to bring it back, yeah.
That's good, that's what I was thinking. Man, good, we had, thank you. I keep keep up with everything. Wow. Is there anything else that we run over on this one? Think of everything, good?
I think that's.
All righty. So do that, now we'll pretty much get everything taken care of and then we'll go to the floor for any comments or praise or fuss or whatever happens. Whoever wants to go first?
I'll go first. I walk the dogs back there, you know, up at the end of the street, you know, down the path there and everything, and every time I go there, I look at all the stuff, it's just piled there and I'm wondering if there might be any opportunity to sell some of that stuff, you know? And I think it would be fairly easy, I mean, not now, it's all covered with cudsy, but coming along, that, you know, and the guys wouldn't really have to do all that much other than put stuff in piles instead of just throw it wherever, you know?
Yeah, well, the thing with eventually, and it's crazy, I hadn't talked to Jane about it, but I was over at the hospital all day and as we go up the drive, which is hard to see, but you need to go there, got to be careful, that the drain for all the hospital comes down to the hill, had a pipe and then it went down into the creek where the pipe broke, been that way, but man, with the rain, it had washed out. And Ben Zaker, the very sheriff, and I said, let's lift off this hole, and we looked and we're like, oh my God, it washed out. We were standing out over the thing, it was probably 30 foot deep, so I told the guys they had a load of rock or something here one day and I said, go over and dump it off in that hole. So that's.
So they'll take the cement, yeah.
That we need to, I mean, that's sort of what we, we'd like to use some of that for.
Yeah.
And I've used some for the creek out at the barn, washing away just to keep it, you know?
Yeah.
So I don't, you know, heck, I don't know if anybody'd buy it.
If anybody needs any, they welcome to the bucket, you don't know.
Okay, well, yeah, all right.
Because some of it is, is so big.
Right, you can't pick it up.
You can't pick it up and I don't know if even the dozer drove up across them, if it crushed any of them, breaking or not, I mean, some of that stuff, man, it's hard.
I know.
But it is, it turned in, I think we got paving from some of the street, but the water lines, they dumped stuff, so. So it's there, our ideal, and we've done, God, we moved one load, we just pushed off in the hole that one.
Well, that's what, that's what you're going to do.
And that's what eventually, but I'm thinking.
Fill and make more, more property up there.
We can use, they can, they can start, you're trying to find some of that, I just had to talk to them, get that fixed over somewhere, but man, if not, that road's going to be like it was from Keith Aprils. And we don't, it cost a hundred grand just to fix what they had, so we don't want to have to fix that whole road. And then we still probably, probably get that filled up, the pipes out and figure out how to get it or add pipe to it and get it there with the right place or like that, but yeah, somewhere it just come loose and I don't know if it's that old, it wasn't clay pipe, it was probably a 12-inch pipe coming there, because somewhere along it had, it had come loose and it, I mean, it had been washed up and I didn't realize it.
Probably just get, get somebody with a dump truck to.
Well, even the guys can back up there and, I mean, you know, a little town dumps something, I just. Ooh, it's, it's amazing, I didn't realize how much it is.
How big that hole got washed out.
Of course, you, we've had a lot of rain, it just wasn't.
No kidding, yeah.
And with the cudsy, you don't really see it. But man, when we were standing out there, I thought, man, it could broke up and in both.
Well, that'd be a good place to put all those big pieces of concrete.
Yeah, if we can get them loaded, because when they backed up that one day, I told them, drop that, we're afraid to back the truck or it might break off, well, if it does, don't do it, you know, I mean, so they didn't do it. But if we can get, get enough of it over, put the trailer, we've been talking about for a while, should get the track though, they could just push, push that and drop it off and that's pretty good, but.
But you know, in the future, there's other stuff. But, you know, in the future, there's other stuff over there, you got telephone poles, you got.
We, we got that, because we were planning on building a.
Pole barn.
Another pole barn shed to put the tractor and dozer and all of our.
So you're, okay.
So that's what we're doing. Some of the cross ties we got for the park, that one town, didn't we, somehow they're there, and I think some of them are still good, some of them.
Yeah, some of our, some of them are nice, yeah.
But it's just, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just, I thought I just.
But I've told folks before, if anybody needed somebody to go through it, but it is, it's, there's some big pieces now.
There are big pieces.
What I got, I can handle, you know?
Yeah.
Pick up, but it, it's about beyond that now.
Uh-huh. Okay.
But either way.
Well, then, I guess that I wanted to introduce my brother, who is now a resident of Duck Town.
Okay.
Officially. Uh, he's, and then the other thing I wanted to ask about was the bicycle parade for the miners coming, homecoming. I, I don't think I'm gonna do it this year.
Okay, I didn't say I, you did it last year.
I did two years in a row.
Okay.
And, um, you know, it was starting to catch on, but I don't know, what do you guys think?
I mean, I, man, I have so much going on, I don't know.
There's a bunch of kids in it.
I've seen them, you know, decorate, and shit's pretty neat, and a lot of them like to do that, but.
All right.
You know, but I know you're doing, you're giving money away, there were one year, wasn't it?
Yeah, both, both years, yeah, yeah. As the prizes and that, you know, I get donations for that, you know, so.
Yeah, I know you've worked on some donations, so, did we donate last year? I know the first year, I think we, the city, so we didn't, or?
No.
Okay.
No.
Can't remember.
It's all right, you know, but I, I don't know, you know? I don't know if people are counting on it or not, so.
Right, yeah.
But.
This, this is gonna be the fiftieth year we've done our miners homecoming, so.
Fifty anniversary?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's.
Okay.
You should do it.
Thanks a lot.
But anyway, that is, that's, that's pretty good, I mean, there's not many festivals last that long, so we're pretty proud that we've, we've made it this long. And up and down, of course, next year will be two hundred and fifty years of our country, and it'll be, they're planning on, I think, all across the country. They're gonna be, what would they be called, they call it, they've got something named for the two hundred and fiftieth, but whatever.
Something centennial, I can't remember what it is.
Yeah, hard to believe, we was there at the two hundred, and now we're gonna be, hopefully, for the two fifty. I doubt they'll see the three hundred.
Now, on your prize, what was your grand prize last time?
Uh. We had three categories, and I think it was, uh, I think it was a hundred dollars.
Okay.
And then.
Something like.
Yeah, and then every, almost everybody in the parade got some, something, you know?
Well, I mean, the reason I was saying is that being this is our fiftieth year, then, you know, for them to spend the time and decorate their bicycles up and be patriotic or whatever, I mean, we can put some in for, for their own prize, so, so get with us.
All right, yeah, because it's, I just realized, it's June.
Oh, no, believe me, I know. And if we're done at the, it'd be the twenty-eighth, so.
All right, I was getting, working on that flyer, and, uh, started getting it going.
Yeah, forward or get sure so she can email me, and I'll get it on their, I'll get it on their.
Put it on the flyer. Okay, cool, all right.
One thing I'm holding up right now, I don't know if we're doing the pageant or not. Last tenant called me, or messaged me back. If I don't have that, then, I think you know the name, send me the name. So I can get them on there too, but.
They don't have those anymore.
We're splitting with them again. The cost for the brewery for the, the band there that do, whatever, seem like, I don't know, they may be a bigger band, so.
One of the things with the bike parade would, sorry, go ahead.
It just hit me what the name of the band was, so I just blurted it out.
Uh, is that, you know, it's always been the same thing, you know, you say your thing, and then Glenn Spring says their things, and then everybody rushes in to get their cookies, and so there was never any announcement about the bike parade, so if we could.
Inside the head, because I forget.
Yeah, all right, just, you know, I know people were anxious to get in there and get their cook, cookies, so I don't want.
Most times anxious to get in there, which I condition. Get their t-shirt and cookies, but.
Yeah, well, it doesn't have to be.
We did miss announcing the winners.
Yeah.
Oh, true, I guess.
Yeah, and maybe I was thinking we could, uh, have a place to park, everybody wanted to park their bikes in the shade, so we, I put them all on the back line there, so, but maybe I'll, um, see if I can put up a little banner, or, you know, what do you call those things? Like you have in the movies where you get in line, but not like that, you know, for a place that says, you know, Bike, Bikes of the Bike Parade. And it makes, does make for really good photo opportunities for the newspapers, so. All right, I guess I'm in.
I know they're doing breakfast at Lodge, but I guess they're doing Duck Race. I forgot to ask, I guess we need to message them.
Yeah, I haven't heard.
I mean, they always do if they got, if they do this.
I know, I know.
Send me a reminder if you think. It's crazy, kids sort of look forward to that, now, last year, we had it behind Glenn Spring, didn't we?
Yes, it was last year.
And it seemed like it worked pretty good, because most of the kids were there, so, and I even forget to announce that when I'm up there, you know.
Well, I remember a lot of people were looking for it, coming up by us.
Because we've always had it up the street.
Mm-hmm.
But I think last year they moved, we had a water problem or something, I forget, anyway. Something was going on with it, and we moved it, but they liked it back there pretty good, so. If that's where they, it might be, maybe safer there. We have trouble parking up here, people always trying to drive, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
And then Rod's in business that day too, I guess he'd be, yeah, he'd, probably work better.
Better down there.
So it's gotten him probably fine with that, but I have to get Bailey or Dale one and make sure we're still, still doing it, I think they're good.
That's all I have, so.
Okay.
I do, I just want to mention too, that, I know you know, but the, uh, farmer's market.
Right.
Is this Saturday.
That's Saturday, okay, I seen that.
I don't have any information on it.
On Main Street, so they're gonna close down.
First section.
Lock her section.
Or whatever.
From Douglas to up there, and she's already talking to Jared, and everybody goes up, it's Saturday morning.
What do you consider the first section, down here?
Douglas, Douglas to Spruce.
Douglas Street, up to Spruce Street, so basically from this side of.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, up to Ar Street.
Yeah, up to that street there, yeah. Yeah, because I told her, I said, I don't know why, I said, be sure.
That's gonna pull a lot of traffic coming through.
Talk to Jared, because he affects him the most, but that's his busy day, Saturday. I think he just, oh, like twelve, isn't he?
One.
But still, he didn't want, but either way.
She was gonna talk to him.
So I think she said she did, but.
Yeah, she, she talked to everybody, so they were good with that, and they were.
And come in the other side?
Yeah, let's get on.
Well, we try, you know, if it works out, you know, hopefully, then we can move it back here to the stage.
Yeah.
And we've got Jeff coming up here, he's supposed to come up and look at the stage and do any repairs when they, because, you know, we've got some rotten wood on the back windows where the weather, we built that.
Been a while.
Fifteen year old, and we hadn't sealed it or nothing, since the old Jeremy left. The bottom, all that's good, I think, just like I said, some of those boards on the window, it's rotting, we just, supposed to look at it, I said, just look it over and see what it is, but he did get that piece fixed, good on the building, but I told him, you know, we'd mentioned probably replacing everything, so he got a buddy of his, he's gonna have to come up, you know, cause, but look, it maybe, because the biggest thing, he said, man, he said, I need hazard pay. Just kidding, but there's no backing, you know, all that is tacked to the two before the studs, and man, when you laid a ladder up there, oh, he, he was on Jared's roof, leaned over. Yeah, it wasn't nothing really holding it, but, but he got it back, so, so.
Yeah, you really do that.
It might be good, it probably needs plywood or something, put on all that, then that, decide and put back on it, so. I can't believe it wasn't leaking on the dock, because all the wind usually blows in, it's sort of.
Yeah, it's blowing up.
Weird, but, okay. Getting sidetracked there, so, anything? Got anything, sis?
No.
Just come to listen.
Just come to listen.
I got a call from my fellow the other day. Tyler. Down in the bottom, you called him.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I got you.
He messaged like, I need to talk, I look, going, but anyway, so, yeah, we talked a little bit, then. He's all right, I don't know if he's settled or not, but everywhere, you never know.
Oh, yeah, I.
You know, off in the bottom down there.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah. But other than that, anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. A little bit quick.
Thank you for your time, guys.
Appreciate y'all coming, and thanks for what you're doing.
Get with me, Alice, I'll, I'll help you, whatever, do whatever.
Okay, all right, thanks, Cheryl. Great, boss.
Good call, thank y'all.
I can't believe you wrote me that thing down.
You do such a good.